This time we bring this Dugler Board of Support Meeting Monday, May 11, 2020 at 7:01 PM. Members present are David, Brett, Kenny, Jennifer, and Susie. This time we move on to recognition of the senior class from 2020.
We didn't call them in kind of like last month, limit our audience and stuff, but we want to make sure that we take some time to recognize our senior class. We did have some things that have been announced recently. Validatorian Mason Peery, Salutatorians Corbin Kimberling and Devin Wilson. Top 10%, Taran Honeycutt, Corbin Kimberling, Juliana Nixon, Mason Peery, Cassidy Suggs, Bailey Villarreal, Kylie Winlet, Devin Wilson, Horaang Zain. To be determined plans for baccalaureate prom, graduation, senior trip, et cetera. They are happening. Kind of what our plan is, is to meet next week after we've come out of Phase 1 into Phase 2 in the Governor's 3-Phase Plan, anticipate planning some things mid to late June. And soon as that meeting happens next Monday, we'll be in contact with those guys, but we want them to make sure that they know they've not been forgotten in their efforts. That group will be celebrated.
Okay, this time we move on to approval of encumbrances. Anything?
Minutes.
Oh, it's approval of minutes, I'm sorry, from the April 14th, 2020 meeting.
Change.
I was trying to get mine filmed.
No, sir.
For approval minutes?
Second. And for motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the minutes from the April 14th, 2020 meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to approval of encumbrances.
Looking at encumbrances, pretty really just three, four different categories. 382 to 388 are all of our high school bulk orders, just stuff into the year orders in preparation for next year so they have everything ready to go for teachers, staff. 389 to 399 are the same thing for the grade school. 400 to 403 is the middle school. And then 404 is FFA, stuff for Mr. Dawson. So those are pretty simple this month.
I was just curious on 385, Science Department, Biological, Carolina Biological.
Carolina Biological, I know we've ordered from them both in Clinton. It's a pretty major, I mean, anything for labs and stuff like that, it's a lot of stuff. Science Department's probably one of your bigger consumable orders every year. Elementary has a lot of consumable orders, but at the high school, I would say Science is one of your bigger ones besides FCC.
So it's just it's supplies for labs?
Curriculum materials, labs and stuff for the school year.
For next school year.
Correct, yes.
Make a motion for approval of encumbrances.
One second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to approve the encumbrances as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time move on to other financial reports.
Gas list, I mean, really all we've spent on, main department and then anything for meal delivery, filling up those vehicles. Let me get back off this. Really, when you look at it overall, we've talked about finishing that 1.9 for the year. We met with Judy into last week, excuse me, there we go right there. We have the potential this year, we could finish at $2.5 million, depending on what we want to do. In the big bulk of that, we had budgeted was for textbook orders. We will eat into that, I know for sure at the elementary. But with what we've done with Chromebooks, there really might not be a need at all at the secondaries. I think what we can get online can supplement a lot of that stuff. Bills looks like to be a big thing that's down and really what it was last year at this time. We ordered a school bus, a couple other items that were a big bulk. So it's not like our bills were overall down. It was what we ordered last year to what we didn't order this year. It's what you see that 178, almost 179 number. So a real healthy balance overall. Again, anticipated into that, into that 2.7 we will. Again, and what we decide in the next month with, really the big thing, like I said, is textbooks and that's could be up to $400,000, but if we don't, there's a potential to carry over 2.5. And that's 600,000 over what we had talked about for the year. So just some decisions in the next month. And we're, we won't be penalized if we carry over the 15% due to what they've relaxed with Corona. So potentially we can carry over. Another thing, we just got our stimulus package today, and my internet's going in and out, it looks like. But we received almost 354,000 as part of our stimulus package, so that's going to really help. It will hopefully cover some of the anticipated shortfalls in the future. So financially, looking pretty good for right now, but we also know there might be some doom and gloom in the future with where we are as a state. And if it turns around, it won't, but the other thing with that, like we've talked about, is enrollment. We've got to make sure that we continue to capture that enrollment and don't lose kids.
You know, just a general question is how have, how has this pandemic affected our financials? I know we're getting stimulus money, which I assume that's a good thing, and, but I mean, what do we, what are we losing or are we losing anything? I guess we're losing.
Payroll didn't change, so that was, that's your biggest, biggest account. Really the biggest thing savings-wise, last financial year, month, we spent over $5,000 in fuel. This month, we spent about $250 in fuel. So that's really your biggest, when payroll doesn't change at all, because everybody continued to get paid whether we were in or out of school, and that's your basic expense. So we didn't save a ton of money. I think the last month or so of school, typically six weeks is your biggest thing with substitutes. Of course, we didn't have any of those. So overall, our savings is minimal due to Corona. And we're going to come out ahead with our stimulus package, but I mean, we didn't, we didn't.
And the state funding still, there's no effect on?
Well, and I'll talk about in the superintendent's report, I mean, it's, next year is what's going to come about. We're going to lose across the state, not just us, about $95 per weighted ADM per student, but that's on a weighted scale. So you can do a multiplier on that to, once we get how many students we're going to have and what our weighted ADM, and multiply that by $95 and tell you what we're going to be getting.
ADM is that average?
Weighted ADM, it's, it's, each student is a number, but also each student has a category. Like if you're early childhood, you get more weights, like 1.25, where another, a regular special ed student might be 1.75. There's different multiplier effects versus what categories those students fit in. Gift and talent to the category, free and reduced lunch is a different category. So each of those has a different weight. So it's not just off of our 1,250 students. Each of those students has a multiplier and that's where you get your weight. So it's about $3,560 per student is what we get, and then you add that multiplier.
And statewide, those numbers are becoming down because of?
How much money's in the overall cash pot.
Any questions, clients? We go with financials. Okay, at this time, Board of Education invites public comment at this point in regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy BEV-R. No one press it for that. Information items, superintendent reports.
Talked about a little bit ago, student ceremony update from the Department of Health and the Secretary of State of Education. They're talking recommended graduations after June 1st. Again, like we talked about, our team is going to meet next Monday and set something up. Talked about the phases. Phase 2, when we get into Phase 2, hopefully that's after the 15th, one more week. Recommendations, kind of the nutshell stuff of that, is safer at home for those 65 and that vulnerable population. If you're going to have things, still social distancing and avoiding groups. So if we were to do something in May, all those stipulations would be in place. The hope is, we go into Phase 3, June 1st, you can resume unrestricted staffing. Summer camps for churches and school can open. And there's not a lot of details on Phase 3 in the government's recommendation. It says, once we get into Phase 2, we will release. And the thing I want you guys to think about as a group before we meet next Monday, reunion days, is it, you know, the 19th and 20th, is it good to plan something around that? Is it better to wait at, you know, I don't want to compete, but could it make it better? So think about that. We've got a week before we meet, so those are some things I would ask you guys. If you hear something the next week, let us know and we'll take that into account. So I could, I could see it being a good thing, but I could see it taken away. So I don't, I want to make sure it's good for everybody. So those are just some thoughts on ceremonies coming up. Legislative update, and just updated at the end of the day, the virtual transparency bill did pass, it goes to the governor. That increases transparency and accountability for those virtual charter schools, and that's some transfer things, but that's also releasing some more information. So the Senate did vote for that, and then it's going to the governor. It's not in, but it could be to the House at any time now, Senate Bill 407. This was something of priority, we talked about it the first of the year. It's that Equal Opportunity Scholarship Act. It really sounds good, but what it is, it's a tax credit to private schools. So any money that goes to private schools is money that takes away from public schools. So just be aware, as you talk to legislators, that's something that's going to be a high priority, and it's not up for a vote right now, but it could come in at any time. The top two paragraphs, it just talks a little bit more specific about that $95 per student we're going to lose that we talked about. And then as part of stimulus, the governor has control of $40 million for education that he gets to say what that goes to. And he's really wanting to use that, private schools, charter schools, things like that.
So we're against Senate Bill 407?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. We were for 2905, it did pass, and anticipate the governor signing that pretty quickly. But if you wanted to reach out to him and encourage him, that would be something that would be beneficial.
So who, does he have a panel or somebody that helps him determine what he does with that 40 million? Is he?
I don't know what's helping him make decisions.
Okay.
He's got some panels and he's got some advisors, but.
Maybe Sean Heim or someone that, you know, is in education that is, you know, very involved in.
He's, I know, I do know Sean's doing his best to bend his ear, but I don't know how open he is to that. Just with his background and where his, where his own kids went to school, I know that's kind of something that he stands behind. But our state superintendent is advocating for him and to use some of her money. The state kept 10% of ours, about $16 million that we got as a state. And her big push is for expanding internet access across the state for students that if we do go into this, if there is a second wave in the fall, things like that, well, we have devices, but if there's the inability for kids in rural areas to get internet. So she is recommending he use some of that money and then some of the State Department's money for that. So I know that's her position, I mean, that would help us. And I mean, we've got to get some towers in some different areas around here for our kids to utilize internet access.
Calling our senators and our representatives.
Yes, yes.
As a matter of fact, on the OSSBA website, there is a list of all of the representatives in Congress.
Has their emails and if they have social media accounts.
It has it all along here to reach out to them.
Yep. And I, the governor, I know, has been good. There's the couple times that I've, and there's a form you fill out and go in there and say, what would you, what are you advocating for? I got an email back and it said, thank you, we appreciate you reaching out, stuff like that. So yes, it's not falling on deaf ears, and it may be a secretary doing it, but I appreciate him at least letting me know that they got it. Facilities, working hard, almost done on waxing of all our floors will be done Monday or Tuesday of next week with all that. If you haven't been around, I know that tech ed, maintenance shop, transportation barn, people in his crew have done a great job. I mean, it looks like a remodel in there. They just had some time now to go in there and clean out some of those rooms who haven't been cleaned out in probably decades. So a lot more usable space, and we know all our inventory is, and we can start, we can start using some of those things we have. All of our buses, you've seen them all lined up in the back, they've all been through end of the year inspections, they've been updated. We talked about that last month. Spending some of the money we did, that's, we're ahead of schedule and all that stuff. If you haven't toured around over there in the back by the Roy Park, we've got the post-up, they're working on the gates this week and weather permitting, if they can get out there, that should be done pretty complete. We do want to recognize, people got Coilstone to donate, there's some big rocks out there. So people, appreciate you doing that, Coilstone, we want to recognize them. GM update, plumbing bids are in, we'll talk about that as an action item. We have to get those done before we get the foundation work done. And then digital marquee, and I think that's something that could be a potential revenue generator for us, and also it's just a great communication tool. And like it or not, it's probably the first thing you see when you come in from that side of town or the last thing. And if we could clean that up, I think that would be beneficial for us overall. But that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. This time we move on to action topics, action may be taken. Action topic A, consideration of lease agreement on the Perry property with Perry Frehigel Baptist Church.
Something I think Judy said for, she's been here 30 years and we've done it for 30 years, so that's something I would like to recommend and continue to do.
Yeah, I read through this already, what, do we actually lease it to them or they use it and they maintain it?
They maintain it, they pay the insurance. It's our property, so everything is covered by, we, we're not out on anything. They're maintaining the grounds and they're, they're responsible for the insurance of the grounds.
Make a motion for privilege, Karen.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to go into the lease agreement on the Perry property for the Perry Frehigel Baptist Church. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of bids with, for the digital marquee and signage on Main and 7th Street.
Have two bids in there, reached out to several. Daktronics is one of the bigger ones, and their local rep is Bartlesville, so I mean, excuse me, Bartlesville, Broken Arrow. The one that I would recommend, we've worked, I've worked with before in different districts, would be the Oklahoma LED bid. It's 10,000 less, and other than that, they're really apples to apples. The thing I would like to recommend them to do, what I like, looking at it, we can make the call, I like the, the top part from the Broken Arrow group, the red signage, just how they like that. The other one's white, just kind, this one just, if pops is the right way to say it, I think that looks better. But underneath that, they're both 10 mil signs, and what that is, they said, five years from now, you're not going to be disappointed, it's still going to look like watching a big screen TV.
Guaranteed for that five years or?
Five-year lifespan guarantee, warranty. And the, the deal with, going with Oklahoma LED, it's a turnkey deal. They'll come in, they are certified electricians, that's kind of what they do. So if the other bid that's 10,000 more, we would have to have certified electricians come out there and prepare it and get it ready for them to come in and just mount everything up. So the Oklahoma LED would be 10,000 cheaper. It's a group that I've worked with before, and other than that, it's comparison, the exact same type of signage stuff.
What's wrong with the existing one?
It doesn't work at all.
Oh, it's.
Hasn't worked, I think, in over a decade.
Oh, really?
Yes.
It worked for the first.
Guess I'm not very observant.
Maybe two or three years.
Drive by it every single day.
And then it wouldn't, then half of it wouldn't, half of it wouldn't, and I mean, it was just kind of off and on.
That's what I said.
Yeah. It didn't seem like it's been there that long, it was frightening that long time.
It's been there quite a long time, I don't know how long, but.
And I think you could get into a deal with it if you wanted to use it for advertising and, and, you know, sell some advertising on there, it could pay for itself if you didn't want to get into that. I think, I mean, 43,000. Initial bids, when I first came in at the start of the year, we looked and there were 65, 70,000 to come in here and do the same thing. And I think, economy being it is, I think these guys are looking for work. So I think we've got, we've got a way better bid now than we had eight months ago. Money's there in our building fund, except we've got over 8,000, 800,000 in there, but it's a deal that if, if we do now, they're so far out in ordering it, shipping it, getting here, to do it now would guarantee it would be here and be ready by August, so.
This question kind of ties in with my previous one. I, I think that, that sign's obviously in a prime location. I think it's extremely important, but it's like, my concern is like, how are we going to be affected budget-wise with all the things that's going on with this pandemic? And I, I think it needs to be done, it's just, you know, for me, it doesn't need to be done now, I guess is the question. Of course, I know this is something that was. End up kicking it down the, kicking it down the road and it never gets done, which I don't.
Judy and I have talked, I mean, building fund, the budget's there, 354 coming in of stimulus money. The thing is that I would have more concerns on is reoccurring expenses and that staff. You know, if this is a one-time expense, that's it. And we know it's not going to be anything for, for five years, warranty-wise. So you know, and again, if it becomes a revenue producer and pays for itself after that, if you've got revenue coming in from advertising.
How much is the advertising going to be? I mean, how much will that run a business or whoever, whatever they want to, you know, whatever they want to give, they want to donate $5,000?
I think you would have to set and say, hey, we're going to run and you're, you're going to get an eight-second spot every hour, and it's going to rotate on there, and it's going to be $100 a month. I mean, you just have to decide what would be viable.
So the advertising is going to be electronic, where it changes, it's not like you have.
Oh, it could be a movie or it could be a business card, it could be whatever. I mean, it's.
Will they set all that up? Will they do that this time?
They'll come train us to do it, and we can do it at any of our offices to change it, to update it, to, I mean, you don't have to go there and plug anything in, we can sit right here and update it and load something.
And then how the last one, when, when the, how the last one was that we are, do you remember? It wasn't, it wasn't.
Did you have to walk right up to it?
You had to sit on your computer and program it, and then take it down there and download it into that.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And what's wrong with that when there's a computer boards out of it? And there's like five computer boards in it and they're $10,000 a piece? And they won't guarantee them. That's why that hadn't been fixed.
You wonder why they went bad, is it, I mean, is it any moisture? I mean, I, I mean, I know electronics doesn't last forever, but they seem like they've come a long ways though, they don't go out like they used to.
High school football fields have Juggotrons out them and they stay out there all year long.
So I had a question on that first, though. Is the one on the left, is that the ANI and the other one that LED? Or is that the same one? I mean, is that ANI giving two different options?
This is currently what it is, and this is what they, what I would, again, my preference would be, would be to go with the Oklahoma LED bid, but have, I like this top part better than the white one that they put in. And they can do whatever we tell them on top, that was just their mock-up, they pulled some stuff off our website.
The top part's not electronic, that's permanent.
Correct, this is permanent, it's just like it is right now, they would just update the standing sign and the digital sign.
I like.
So the top part would be, you like the white or the red better?
I like the red.
I like the red too.
I mean, that's our predominant color, that's it.
And I know when it worked, when I drove by it, I always liked looking at it and seeing what it said, and, you know, I always enjoyed it.
And I don't think he would have to get into any advertising stuff right away with $43,000. It's not like we would be hurting. I don't, I mean, again, my deal when I look at, but it's a one-time expense, it's not a reoccurring, I think we've got some other things where we could save some money on our reoccurring expenses on staff. So either way, but to get it here, we would, by August, we would have to make the call in a pretty short order. Thank you.
And you were actually, you're, you're recommending the 37,000?
No, the other, not the ANI, the Oklahoma LED one.
So that's the 53?
No, that's the 43.
Where the electrician.
Maybe I'm, I'm missing something.
Yes, Oklahoma LED, and they've done some work with us before in Clinton, and he's a pretty stand-up guy, and.
Sign's 32 and its installation's 10, so I mean, that's.
43,320.
Make a motion that we use Oklahoma LED for our sign at 43,322.
You know, this is one of those deals where I'm, I mean, I guess maybe if I'm out of order here or not, but as long as the, you know, as long as we're, we're assured that the money's there and it's not going to put us, I think it's very important, I think it's very important, I'm not.
In our building fund, and we don't have anything budgeted for it yet. The big thing that we thought at the first of the year, roof's going to be about 500,000, well, we spent 500, and we're probably going to spend another 600 doing that. So that was one thing that I was highly concerned about was roofs. I think we've taken care of that issue for a while with what we've been able to spray on top or roll on top. So really with that 800,000, we don't have anything else budgeted for it right now. That's not saying we don't have needs across, but we just don't have anything designated for those. Yes, we budgeted that already, but a budgeted in there. Plumbing looks like it's going to be additional 11,000 that we didn't budget for, but it's 11,000 out of 800,000.
And if it's in a building fund, I assume those funds have to be used for specific things and they can't be transferred around to other budgets?
I have a motion that.
I'm, I'm, you know, I, I think it's important, I think it needs to be done, it's just a matter of being in, is my opinion. Because that, you know, it's right out there where everybody sees it, and it's, I think it's a, it's a good thing.
My thought process.
As long as I got assurance that we're, the money's there and it's not going to cause future problems, I don't personally have a big problem with it. I think it's going to have to be done.
You believe the price is going to go back up?
With our initial bid, I think it was either 65 or 67,000 when I first started looking in, I think it's going to go, definitely going to go up.
Because I do remember us talking about that several months ago.
The, the deal is of putting it up for action right now is getting it here into the start of school and having that thing up and running, and whether it's announcements or enrollments or anything like that, it gives you that ability to have it then.
Did you say that this company does the maintenance on it also?
Their warranty.
Or is that going to be up to us to do it, or?
It should be zero maintenance, and that's their promise in the first five years. Hey, what about training? We'll be there. What about if something goes, we'll be there. What about setting it up? The other one, we would have to help set it up and hire electricians and all that kind of stuff. These guys are electricians, they're the ones who install all the lighting at.
I think it needs to be done, and like, the money's there, I don't, I don't.
See, and I see this about this manufacturer's warranty, but I never did see exactly how long it was in here. It just says the lights are covered by product warranty provided by the manufacturer.
I never saw five years.
Yeah, but I, I never did see how long the warranty was for.
This is the Accura. This one has a warranty on it, but it doesn't say a time period.
We would have to pay the hourly, it's, well, what am I thinking? It's not the, it's just the equipment warranty, not the maintenance. If they were, if they were to come down, they would charge us for labor, yes.
This is any lights that fail during manufacturer warranty period. VI doesn't.
But the LED lights, they're supposed to last 10 years, right? Isn't that right, people?
I think that's approximate.
Yeah, minimum of 10 years.
Minimum?
This will be a long-term fix?
That'd be any LED you could get.
What'd you say, 10 years?
10 years.
First LED light.
Oh, for LED, oh, okay.
So that's why I was wondering, would 10 years be the warranty or?
I doubt it.
Yeah. Can we circle back around to it?
Sure.
Can we go back?
Take no action, you can action or you can vote no, either.
How long are these clothes good for?
15 days.
15 days?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, not very long.
I don't know.
You're not starting?
It's long, I mean, you know.
Because I told them we were having the board meeting.
I really would like to know more about the warranty for sure. Because it, it doesn't, it doesn't stay in here.
Yeah, it doesn't stay in here.
Yeah, I wish we could call them, because I'm, I do want to do it, I mean, I, I want that side fixed.
I would too. You know? I want see it fixed too. But I want to know what we're getting for $43,000.
Will they tell everything else?
Kenny, is this the one that you were making the motion off of?
The, yeah.
Yes, that's Oklahoma.
We can retract that for sure, so we're going to, we're just, we can vote now.
It doesn't say anything on this, because it has details over here, but it doesn't say anything about the warranties.
Do you think, do you think we ought to know about the warranties?
And remote link.
Yeah.
Joe, Boacham.
Um, if it's not.
Hey, five-year warranty?
The other one is that five-year part is only warranty.
I don't see it in the contract, and that's the debate right now.
The other one said five-year part is only warranty, yeah.
It just doesn't explicitly say, and that's the, that's the.
Yeah, I'm sure it would just be parts only on all of them. The labor will be, you know, most everything will be. Paid labor after a certain amount of time, it may be one-year parts.
On the digital marquee.
But like, he said those computer boards were 10,000 a piece apart, you know, so, you know.
That ends up pretty quick.
Perfect. Hey, Joe, I'll put you on speakerphone real quick.
Okay.
So we won't, we won't make this motion to pass, we'll make it contingent on a contract with a five-year warranty.
That is correct, and, and, and if that's, I can, you can put your hand right down and sign it, and I'll fully, and I'll fully execute it, or I can send you one reprinted with a five- or I can send you one reprinted with a five-year warranty.
Four.
I would.
Part of what?
I would.
Five-year, like a four of what?
Yeah, four, four, that's parts, labor, yeah, just explicit, yes.
That's correct.
Details, details.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would ra- I would rather if you would redo one with that in there.
Okay, and I'll, I'll forward that tomorrow.
Okay.
You'll have that.
Awesome, thanks, buddy.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye. That's where I can work with Joe and you can, I mean, he's, he's gonna get it done because he, it's, that's his company, he's the president and.
So they can, they can do it with the revised to show five-year warranty with parts and labor?
Think you would, yeah, make the motion to say I recommend pending all that, yes.
Contingent on it. Contingent on it.
In writing, the warranty in writing.
Five-year parts and labor. You wanna read, you wanna redo it?
Uh I make motion, we use Oklahoma LED, uh contingent on the wording of parts and labor warranty for five years.
Second, Oklahoma LED.
Correct.
Jennifer, you say second?
Mm-hmm.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to enter to a um contract with Oklahoma LED contingent on warranty for parts and labor. Um et cetera, um Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. It's time to move on to action topic C, consideration of bids, bids for plumbing repairs for the high school gym lobby.
Again, you only see two bids in there, we like to turn in three, people has called several. Um and these are the only two bids we were able to get. The recommendation is to go with Benefit Plumbing, they are the ones who came and did our uh video inspection. So they, they know exactly what needs to be done and and theirs is honestly a bit better bid, but they're, they know the whole scope of the job. Um because they were the ones who came in here, so that's what we would like to make the recommendation with there.
There's the lower eleven thousand.
Correct, the other one was fourteen, I think.
Eleven-eight. Eleven-eight.
So you're actually, you're, you're recommending the low bid as well?
Correct.
I assume this is a priority one?
Have to get this before we go to foundation work, yes.
Yeah, we have to do that first.
I make a motion, we accept the estimate from Benefit Plumbing for the GM lobbying.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the bid from uh Benefit Plumbing, um Roland, for the high school gym lobby. Um for eleven-eight. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. It's time to move on to action topic D, consideration to purchase new band uniforms.
Um have a bid in there, um and this is Stanford and some band officers, uh booster club officers are here. Um there's a a attachment in there, uh this has been a long process for her that, um she's done a lot of research and looking into this. This was going to be the company that she probably was going to recommend working with. Uh the other ones are typically a lot higher. Um and it, it's been ten years um since bands had new uniforms. We just approved a couple of months ago on a uh four to six-year rotations for some of our athletic teams. Approving it now gives them the ability to have these uni- uniforms in here um for the start of the next school year or right into the first month so they can use those during their competition season. Part of our, um you know, we talk about budgets and and uh what the recommendation would be is for us as a school to pay half and the band boosters to pay half. Well, at this time, they don't have full, the full half fund, so what they would like to do is the next three to five years, they've been averaging about five thousand dollars in collections, well, depending on how fundraising goes in the next three, it might take more like five years, but they would pay fifteen thousand back to our general account, we would just need to front that money when the uniforms come in, so. Um being that it's been ten years and being that they would like to split this fifty-fifty um as a booster club with the school district, um I would like to make that recommendation and they're here if you have any questions.
Oh, we can show you the uniform if you would like to see. Yeah, we'd like to see it, sure, you bet.
You go to before and after or just?
Yes.
Or just an after?
What model for you, you want? Um this is, this was the uh uniform that we currently have and we did purchase this ten years ago. Mr. Self uh helped us with this decision and um I do like the quality of the uniform. This is also the Standbury Company uh th- this is coming from and they were the only company that got back with me and so I get, you guys are a little familiar with that. Um the quality of the uniform on this allows us to, uh this uniform to wash it in the machine rather than have it dry cleaned. Um so the dry cleaning material just takes a lot out of the uniform and uh this white sleeve with the red, I, has a pink tint to it after a few go-rounds and so there's not as much red, which I, I don't like, but the black pants helps us um in our competitions and the lifespan of the uniform is about ten years and I think this one we can actually stretch a little longer um because the quality is a lot better uh nowadays. I, I do plan to get a new monogram here because it's the same, so like a little bit updated, but that's the uniform that we're looking at, so.
So that's the new one and this is what we currently?
This is what we currently have, yes, and then this is the new one that we would be getting, yes.
What are you gonna do with the old ones?
Not sure yet. Um we uh we held on to the old, old ones for a long time. My plan is to try and find somebody like a school that has the red and white colors and try and see if we can surplus them. Um because this is just a stitching that can be pulled off and it does say Stigler on the, on the shoulders as well. Um but it can be taken off and their school could be put on there. Um or patches can be put on, like there are options with that, so we just have to find a school with these colors that could do that.
I mean, did we have the surplus?
Um we have uh right at a hundred, uh give or take.
That's how many you were ordering too, right?
Yes, yes. Hmm, and we have, we, this last year we had ninety-five kids in the band, so we were, we were stretching so much how to get those uniforms and not all of them are wearable, some are too big and some are just quite a bit too small, so we made it work. Um uh definitely did that, but this is gonna give us a a better option as well, so.
What does this, if it's in here and I missed it, I apologize, what does it cost per uniform, what's the cost per uniform?
This is four hundred and eighty dollars, um right at it. Uh and that's the, the standard cost is, is usually around that five to six hundred dollar range. Some of the other uniform companies, even though we don't have a bid, um I know in the past, the previous bids that we did get when we ordered these uniforms, um or, so this uniform was about three hundred and sixty dollars. Um and so you, the price increase, you're gonna see that. The other uniform companies are about five to six hundred dollars at that range too. Materials are different, um the, this Standbury has kind of cornered the market with this particular material, it's kind of a dry fit, so it breathes a lot better with the kids and when they're out there marching and it's ninety-five degrees outside and even though it's dark, it's, it breathes a lot better, so it doesn't sweat as much and the other uniforms were, most, some of them are made out of wool and so they're a lot heavier and a lot harder to wear, um a lot harder to dry clean too, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I almost sound like a broken record, but which budget does this come out of it and how much money's in there?
Well, again, what, 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 my plan would be, and we haven't wrote, we've got our three hundred and fifty-four stimulus, three hundred and fifty-four thousand in stimulus and we've got a lot of flexibility in that, pretty much what they've recommended is anything out of your general account, you can spend that for. Um and my justification with new band uniforms would be linked due to Corona's that we're cleaning up and we're getting new uniforms to keep our kids safe and healthy, so I would justify it coming out of that stimulus account.
Will they go for that?
There's only one way to find out. That's true. But I mean, we, we, we plan to exhaust that in the first month or two of the next fiscal year. And whether it be salaries or band uniforms, then whatever we put that in, we'll have money from that account, so.
They're all still gonna, you know, help too.
And fifteen thousand will be coming back in the next three, five years.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're all still gonna help too, so.
Just the pandemic seems to have everything turned upside down, I may be overly paranoid about it. I make a motion that we purchase some new band uniforms.
I'll second. I have a Jennifer. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to allow the purchase of the new band uniforms. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, discussion of school insurance for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Um and really no action, I just wanted to have those bids, I I sent you an email today if you didn't get a check. Um the secondary bid um hasn't came in yet and that was my intention of having it this month, um so it wouldn't be last minute. A lot of times we're typical on giving it to you the day of the board meeting, so you don't have a lot of time to look over those. Um so we have the one, um I was back and forth with our current carrier today and said, I need that bid next week. We need time to look over that, so we should be getting that. Um the thing to look over, and really we'll talk about it in a month, but um I just got in the mail. One of the big things, um last year, there were really two things that we talked about, uh was roofs. Well, our current carrier, their defaulted roof policy is gonna be the same, they don't full coverage anything after fifteen years and that's what ours are. So I, when that second bid comes in, we should be getting apples-to-apples comparison, so um really nothing other than a discussion. Um and soon as that other one comes in, I'll email you and we'll look at those, so we'll be prepared to make a decision next month, cause that is a pretty big experience.
What was our previous cost, what was, or this year's cost?
Oh.
Cause I'm curious how much this went up or down or?
Twenty, I'll have all that for you next month.
Okay.
Uh but I know last we picked, it was a twenty-five, twenty thousand dollar difference and we went with that one because of roofs and then we had a a possible claim out there, so those are the concerns. And with this bid, really had a lot of discussion on our possible claim and said, I wanna make sure that that's covered and you will handwalk us through if there's anything and that's one of the guarantees that they had. And then the other thing is, it's one's in town, one's out of town, so.
So Ruth will be extended longer than fifteen, not gonna get that?
Well, yeah, we're not gonna get, we, we, one of the reasons we chose the other one, they don't have that coverage anymore. Anything over fifteen years um is partial, it was full replacement, it's not anymore, they've changed that policy. So we should be getting a pretty good look at uh the two bids, so as soon as I get that, I'll email it to you.
And so that we, we won't have to decide.
No, that's it, just, that was just, just a comment, we can move on.
Okay.
Okay, it's time to move on to executive session. A, proposed executive session to discuss and act upon the following business. Pursue it to twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven, being one of the open meeting act. Number one, discussion of continued employment or non-reemployment of career status certified teachers and probationary certified teachers for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number two, discussion to employ a fourth grade teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number three, discussion to employ a first grade teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number four, discussion to employ a kindergarten teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number five, discussion to employ a pre-K teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number six, discussion of filling the vacancy for the possession of superintendent.
Make a motion to convene an executive session.
I'll second. Motion made at seven forty-three? Motion made at seven forty-three to convene an executive session by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Second.
Eight twelve. Who's seconded it? Either Kenny? Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David at eight twelve PM, to return the board to open session. Uh Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Uh members present during uh executive session were Ki- uh Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, Brett Warren, David Huggins, Susan White. No votes were taken and vote champ was also present for a period of time.
Time to make a motion to employ the uh career status teachers and probationary certified teachers.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to continue employment um of the career status certified teachers and probationary uh certified teachers for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion, we hire Kim King, fourth grade teacher for twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to employ uh Kim King for the fourth grade teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion, we hire Mackenzie Cole, first grade teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to employ um Mackenzie Cole for the first grade teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes. Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion, we hire Morgan Bryant, kindergarten teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to employ Morgan Bryant, kindergarten teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion, we hire Ashley Hildebrandt, pre-K teacher for twenty twenty-one school year.
Second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to um employ Ashley Hildebrandt for the pre-K teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to fill in the vacancy for position superintendent that we posted on the OSSVA's website, starting tomorrow, May the twelfth, for two weeks, ending May the twenty-sixth at five PM. And we schedule a special board meeting on June the first at seven PM with the agenda to follow.
I'll second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to fill the vacancy of the uh position of superintendent on the OSSVA website for two weeks, starting May twelfth, ending uh May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, at five PM. Schedule um special board meeting on June first, seven o'clock, agenda to follow. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?